Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's had a happy and safe Fourth, which for us starts on the first, our anniversary celebration. I hope you were able to participate in that. It was an absolute terrific day. The staff put together a float for the Fourth of July Parade. That's your council writing in the float. An excellent fireworks display. I've had people contact me just about the fireworks, saying, "Thank you." So although our 25th anniversary begins on, or is technically on, the first, we will continue to celebrate. We have an event for every month coming forward. The T-shirts, the commemorative T-shirts and coins, will be available at each of these events, along with they'll be available at the Recreation Center as well. In terms of many hands is what it takes to pull this off. And I want to particularly thank the council for funding this effort, as well as the 25th Anniversary Committee, which was Chiefs Morrison Price, Scott Thornall, Hallie Willis, Rose Brom, Heather O'Brien, Catherine Adams, Corey Lenzen, Paul Dubai, and myself. And then the Parks and Rec Center also really came through in spades. They were helping with T-shirt sales throughout the day on the First. But everything ran smoothly as far as we're concerned. I don't believe we've ever been more crowded than we were this weekend. The numbers keep growing. But it was a great time all around. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Kraft, would you lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the many blessings we've received here in Oak Island. I ask you to continue to bless our citizens, bless our town. Tonight, I ask you to give the council open minds, open hearts, and a servant's heart to do what is best for the people of Oak Island. At all times, keep us in constant remembrance of who our Lord and Savior is. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. So we have no public hearings this evening, but we do have two presentations. One is not on your agenda, but it's from the Planning Board, who wants to provide an update. David?
Thank you, Town Council, for allowing me the time to do this. The Planning Board has been very busy. I came in about halfway through the UDO reconciliation and cleanup. And our goal was to create a solid plan. He's got it on the wrong slide. There we go. Cleanup and simplify. Action we took was suggestions from Wes McLeod of the Cape Fear Council. And his recommendation was to eliminate some of the vague language and the duplication of language throughout the UDO. We had many, many, many hours of discussion, back and forth, different versions, till finally, we came up with a clean set of definitions and a clean, I think, very simple uses. So that's what you will be looking at in your breakout meetings. And hopefully, you'll see the work that we did. It was a lot of intense labor, and Terry can attest to this. It was hours of discussion. The second thing we did was the vegetation revamp. And what our goal was, to maintain the canopy in Oak Island and to protect the trees. And the highlights from this plan was that we actually have, we established heritage tree size and specimen tree. And we have permits before you can cut down a heritage tree on your lot now, which actually will help regulate the trees and the canopy, and it protects it. Specimen trees are used for building. When they go into build, they have specimen trees that's on the lot that counts toward the credits and the DVH, which encourages saving trees versus cutting all the trees and then having to go back and replant. So that stable, well-grown trees are now available on the lot without having to plant samplings and trees that tend to die from heat and not having a good root system. And the final thing that we have accomplished was the revision of the off-premise sign ordinance. We looked down Long Beach Road and some of the signs, and what we wanted to try to eliminate and keep from happening on the island. We discussed the visual aesthetics of the CDL Zone and what it would take to minimize the signs. We cut down the total sign area and the height of the signs. And we also implemented, or asked you to implement, an overlay district that would protect the Middleton Corridor from off-premise signs altogether. And the long-term benefit is to protect the scenic beauty for signage clutter. It's essential to prioritize and concise visibility, obtrusion, and communication. By doing so, we see the natural beauty, and we still have the messaging going out to the community. So with that, I want to thank you. And if there's any input, please reach out to me or any of the Planning Board members. We appreciate your guidance and support. Thank you.
David, thank you for that report. And please extend our thank you to all of the Planning Board. I know you've been working really hard.
Thank you.
The next presentation is from Chief Lee Price and Chief Charlie Morris.
Madam Mayor, Council, how are you all doing this evening? We're here to touch base on the Hurricane Response Plan. We are very fortunate that we have inherited a Hurricane Response Plan that is time-tested and has evolved over time. Past administration staff have put this together, and we're just very lucky we didn't have to recreate the wheel. All we've had to do is update this plan, put some modern terminology in it to match what we need to do today. We just need to say thank you to the people from the past that have put this together to make our lives much easier. Hurricanes on the coast, you will have unpredictable weather. You cannot plan for every response or how to respond to everything. What this does is gives us general actions taken before, during, and after storm to ensure public safety and maintain town services. Partnerships, as you can see, we have a lot of partnerships with a lot of people, not just the governmental agencies, but, you know, private organizations and everything. They are crucial to making decisions that will be understood, respected, and executed. So our scenario with Hurricane Bill, yes, we picked on you for that one, Bill. Actions taken on potential threat have been identified. We're going to brief town departments and staff on possible forecasts, perform assessments, capabilities, resources, and personnel needs, conduct inter-agency meetings to review preparedness agreements, and encourage preparedness to the public. That's one of the biggest things we want to make sure, is that the public is prepared for things. Your pre-storm communications will include that heavy focus on hurricane supply kits, making sure you've got enough stuff for 72 hours. It's also, you need to submit an access and functional needs form if needed. Example of that right there is on the side. So the people that do have access and functional needs, make sure that that is submitted. If you have any questions about your readiness kit, ready.gov/kit will get you that. Sign up and stay informed at oakislandnc.gov/bill. If once severe weather information page gets put up, Mike creates that URL. It is the only official source. So let's not get our information from, you know, somebody says this, or I saw this on Facebook. Come to the town website, get the official information, because all the decisions that we make will hit that site. That way, you can stay updated. Again, avoid your misinformation. Get it straight from the source. Back up one slide, please. One thing I wanted to make sure is to get signed up. Go to oakislandnc.gov.info. You can get signed up there, and you can see those messages. Before 48 hours, okay, so 48 hours plus, what are we going to do? We're going to monitor, evaluate, and determine. Monitor conditions, inform, and available resources, prepare actions that are needed. We will establish the EOC. We'll begin conference calls with town administration and partner agencies. Again, that URL will be created, and then you'll be able to find out exactly what we're doing by going to that website. 24 hours before Hurricane Bill gets here, we will continue our calls with town administrations, place the employees on standby, begin staging our resources, start staffing that emergency operations center, and then pending a declaration of emergency, make final determinations on and if evacuations are needed. Evacuation reentry, that's always a big thing. Where can you get that information? As we said before, that town website. Bridge closure and reentry plan will be available at all times on the website. Prepare all items needed for time away and your reentry. Determine your evacuation to the shelters, families, and friends. Use your marked evacuation routes and what to take, your ready kit, and be sure you take your reentry documents. Again, all that information right there on the website. 12 hours before Bill gets here, continue our calls with the partner agencies. We're going to start assigning tasks and schedules and duty stations to the employees. Maintain staffing rotations in the EOC. We call that a, it will do 12-hour periods, so I'll staff it for 12 hours with a group. Charlie might staff it for 12 hours with a group. But that operational period, we will start staffing. Again, all that information, we'll do live streams, videos with the peer cam when it stays up. Go to the website, you'll be able to see all that as our planning and progression moves forward. Deciding to evacuate, there is no single factor that determines when to evacuate. There's a lot of things that go into it. Your projected rainfall, storm surge, wind speed, the storm size duration, that IWA location, how it's going to come. There's a lot of things that make that determination before the mayor can sign that thing and say, "Leave or not." And so just to let you know, it's just not one thing. Chief?
Okay. Good evening, Council, Mayor. The evacuation routes specifically for Oak Island, there's three evacuation routes, which will be Highway 211, 87, and 133. All those routes go to Highway 17. All the evacuation routes are marked with signage. And Oak Island's primary shelter is the Cedar Grove Middle School located in Supply, North Carolina. So, and there's actually two right now in Brunswick County. This is our primary one for Oak Island. Both of the shelters now accept pets. Previously, they did not, however they do now. So the types of evacuation that Chief Price was talking about, you've got voluntary, which is recommended to all residents, property owners, and visitors. Mandatory visitor evacuation requires visitors and non-residents. And then mandatory all, which is required of all persons. So we put this together here about the general statute if someone does not comply with this order. They can be charged, you know, with a misdemeanor offense. However, we don't want to charge somebody. That's reserved for a quote-unquote hurricane party, where you have people drinking that refuse to leave. That's what we're going to reserve that statute for, to cut down on the issues. Emergency services may be suspended if the conditions worsen, and we always wise to comply to save your life or that your life of another. Personal evacuation, just something for folks to think about. The absence of an evacuation order is not a guarantee of personal safety. Those who feel unsafe are always encouraged to temporarily relocate, if able to do so safely before the storm's arrival. And this is a personal decision based on self-judgment and should never be influenced by peer pressure, social media, group discussion, or any other outlets. It's your own personal decision if you feel it's unsafe. So during the storm, the actions during the storm is we're monitoring the storm, the storm impacts, we're evaluating the wind speeds for the bridge, the potential bridge closer, and our response capability. Are we able to respond to a call for service in the eye of a storm? And determine immediate response actions needed. If we're closing the Barbie Bridge or that discussion, we have to have that discussion with Caswell Beach when that closure will be enacted. And once again, one thing that we want to emphasize is the information that when we have a weather event, the real-time information that we want to push out to our community so we are all informed as much as possible. So we're going to, that's a priority for us. So actions immediately following the storm, they're activate the damage assessment team. Our Developmental Services has a team, designated volunteer team, that will do the damage assessment with us. We've got to confirm the utilities are operational, our sewer, power, and water. If it's a bad enough storm, DOT's got to come in and survey the bridges, make sure that they're passable and safe for us to travel. Determine and enact specific zone closures. In the last tropical event, East Iasis, the west end was closed, the east end wasn't. So it's a fluid, it's a fluid event. So, and we have to know that going into it, that we have to be flexible, you know, with our zone closures and things like that. And once again, we will, we're going to push that information out. And now that we have the drone technology, if we have an impacted area, we're going to livestream that drone video through the town so people can see exactly what we're seeing. So to provide that information to them so they can make their own assessments, just like we are. So I think that's a really step, a great step in the right direction with keeping our community informed about what's going on on the island, especially when the bridges are closed and, you know, answering the question, "Why can't we come back?" You know, at this time. We'll be able to push that information out. One to two days following the storm, we're maintaining the staffing at the bridge reentry checkpoints, monitor zone closures and the repair, and then begin demobilization of equipment, resources, and personnel. And once again, maintain updates at oakislandnc.gov on the zone closures, the maps, the damage surveys, and that specific information. Post-storm recovery, recovery at one week and beyond, transition to long-term recovery. We activate a donation coordinator position because we start getting donations that come in, and someone has to coordinate those efforts with donations coming in from various people. And the final slide here, and I want to just briefly discuss this. Through preparedness and swift response, we can achieve our primary objective to facilitate a return to normal as quickly and safely as possible. That's one primary message that I want to send tonight, is that we will get, we will open those bridges back up when it's safe. And that we are going to do it as quickly as we possibly can and efficiently, but we have to do it in a safe manner. This means returning residents to their homes, merchants to their businesses and families to their community, and working from the onset with this goal in mind. Combined with patience, from a well-informed public, we can have adequate time to recover without denying due access. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Do you have any questions of the chiefs?
Thank you for all your research.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great presentation. Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda or adjustment of the agenda is next. Terry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to request my colleagues consider, one, adjustment to the consent agenda. We, the town released the RFP for the Rec Center study on Friday. We learned yesterday that indeed, just like the transportation study, this needs to be an RFQ rather than an RFP, per the North Carolina General Statute 143-64.31. Madam Clerk has requested that council approve the change from the RFP to the RFQ, so I would like to add that to the consent agenda. And basically, what the RFQ means is that we will not receive cost proposals. We are bound to determine the consultant by their qualifications and then enter into negotiations for their fee.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Public comment?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could we still have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm sorry, I left that part out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve the entire agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor, as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, public comment. Everyone has three minutes, and we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Jody Patterson and Jamison Gordon are speaking together.
My name is Jody Patterson, and I live on Northwest 9th Street on Oak Island. This is my grandson, Jamison, and he is from Arizona. We are both volunteers for the Recreation Department, working at the Ocean's Education Center and the Nature Center. We're here tonight to present the numbers for June. So in the Ocean Center, the numbers for June are 537. This is a 68% increase over June of last year. For the Nature Center, we have 797 visitors, and this is a 67% increase over last year in June. So we're very excited that we are getting more visitors and getting to meet people, and a lot of repeat people coming back from, whether they're guests on the island or residents as well. So if there's no questions, any questions?
Questions, Council?
No, but thank you for the numbers. We appreciate the data.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you for all you do. I think those are two lesser-known jewels within Oak Island.
Hello. My name is Sue Swiker. I live at 1,000 Elizabeth Drive. I'm here to talk about the Oak Island Traffic Calming Program. The mission statement, which they're going to put up on the screen, states the program is designed to improve safety on all neighborhood streets, as well as the other information there. Essentially, that is the gist of it. That all sounds great. However, the actual program doesn't seem to support it. We think this is due to the lack of input from those who live on the island and walk or ride bikes here daily, and other reasons. The program fails to provide any lasting solutions. We applied for traffic calming on Elizabeth Drive because we are inundated with cut-through traffic, including trucks, town vehicles, and even backhoes. Many of our neighbors are also concerned about the safety and livability of our streets. One neighbor told us a story that her grandson, who moved here a few years ago, at the time, she asked him what he liked most about his new home on Oak Island. He answered that he was happy that he could now ride his bike around the neighborhood. In the past couple of years, though, he can no longer ride on the streets due to the excessive cut-through traffic and careless drivers. He had a few close calls, and they are very concerned about it, so they won't let him ride his bike anymore. This child's freedom and joy has been curtailed. Unfortunately, the traffic calming program was written in a way that gave us little hope for relief in our area. But we decided to apply for a small section of Elizabeth Drive where there are no sidewalks and there is a curve that causes extreme or extra concern. We were denied because drivers weren't speeding enough and there wasn't enough cut-through traffic. Tell that to the grandson, to the dog walkers, bike riders, and families trying to walk to Maymore Park. Tell that to the parents trying to walk to the library with their toddler. The program states that 25% of vehicles must be traveling at 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. That is 40% higher than the speed limit. But in the case of Elizabeth Drive, we have a posted warning speed, which is not enforceable, but a posted warning speed of 15 miles per hour and a significant curve. The program should take those facts into consideration. In other neighborhoods, the speed and traffic data on OKI website shows the average speed is near or below the speed limit, thus resulting in little hope for traffic calming. Perhaps the speed limits are actually too high to begin with. Many towns and cities across the United States have gone to 20 mile-per-hour speed limits on residential streets, and we have visited some of those cities. This allows for multimodal use of the streets, often referred to as shared streets or neighborhood greenways. Our residential streets on OKI are all shared, so why don't we consider truly helping to achieve safe, shared, greenway streets? I urge the council to review the traffic calming program and consider these points, as well as more detailed concerns we submitted last year. I have a civil engineering degree plus 20 years of education and experience in pedestrian safety. In other places I have lived, traffic calming was readily implemented without the unnecessary and unreasonable impediments that were established here on OKI. If the program is truly supposed to improve community safety or enhance neighborhoods, we must fix the program now with actual input from residents, businesses, and council. Obviously, this is a complex topic to cover in three minutes, so if you have any questions, please let me know. And also, I wanted to note that the traffic calming program that's actually on the town website is an older version and needs to be updated with the current one. It was changed during the process of our application, and we were not told of the change, and it is still not on the website. So it's very frustrating when you go to look it up, you cannot find it on the website, and the public would not know that it is different than it originally was written. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. I'm Randy Mizell, 2003 East Oak Island Drive. I've been a taxpayer here for 15 years. And I'd like to thank, first of all, thank each of you for your service to the town. It is appreciated. I know it's tough sometimes, and you get a lot of input both ways, and I do respect that, and I respect you listening to the public. I know on tonight's agenda, we have the land use plan, the street scape master plan, and I just wanted to urge each of you, through this process, if you would please just take into consideration the cost of the study. So we're about to spend, it looks like, about $14,000 a block for this street scape study plan and this master plan. And I would hope that after we spend this money, that we do something with it. We have a number of projects that have been on, that have gone through in the past on the island that are just languishing, like the Rec Center. And we've been waiting and waiting. And so I think that this process will involve public input, and please listen to that. And then, let's make it what we can make it on Oak Island Drive and those 11 blocks. I'd love to see it. I love it here. And so that's just what I want to urge each of you. This is, in some ways, it's easy to make a quick decision, and let's and let's do this, and then the results sit on a shelf somewhere, and then there's a lot of haggling, and then months and years go by, and then we're no better off than what we were. And yet, we spent this money. So, I just want to urge each of you to consider that tonight and in the coming months for that project. And I'd appreciate it. I think the taxpayers would appreciate it as well. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
David Bodenheimer?
Good evening. I'm David Bodenheimer, 5119 Minnesota Drive in South Harbor. Usually, when people stand here, they're here to complain, make demands, or have some special interest in mind. I think I've probably been guilty of that a time or two as well. But tonight, even though it might be a little odd or peculiar, I'd like to say something positive. Mayor White, members of the Town Council, every one of you have given up time with your families, with your hobbies, or just the everyday tasks of life. I know you've given a lot of time to these meetings, to the preparation, to meeting with constituents. And I just want to say I appreciate your public service, your dedication, and your hard work. And I hope those here will join me in saying, "Thank you, and God bless you."
Thank you, David.
And you're ending on a positive note. That was the last one to sign up.
All right, moving on to council reports. I'll start. Most of my time in the recent months has been on the 25th anniversary, and also working with staff and the county staff on hurricane preparedness and response. You saw some of that tonight with the chief's reports. And we'll have more to say in August about the 25th anniversary, when we actually have a chance to consider the data and let you know how that went. But from all of the pictures you see on Facebook and that Mike has posted in the current and/or on the website, it really was spectacular. So, with that, I'll close. Mark?
I'll be brief. First and foremost, we've said it a couple of times, a tremendous, huge thank you to everyone involved in putting on the 25th anniversary celebration. I think it went better than expected. Nothing but positive comments from everybody I met throughout the day. So, just a huge thank you to staff and council and mayor and for all of the effort that everybody put in to make that happen. I mentioned last month that we did get some scores back on Oak Island-specific projects through the Cape Fear RPO from the NC DOT. I'm still working with Sam Boswell, the director for the RPO, to make sure we finalize an analysis and put together a report. So, I'm hoping to bring that back in a future meeting. I think maybe September. We're looking at maybe September. We're going to try to shoot for September. And I'd actually like, have invited Sam to come back to us, instead of Sam just coming, you know, once a year or once every time the contract needs to be renewed. I'd like for Sam to come back and spend some more time with us and keep building that relationship with us here on our local projects. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. So, echoing the Beach Day comments, so kudos to our mayor, to staff, and they just really put on an extra special event, which was nearly perfect, other than the ad hoc wet t-shirt contest that our mayor and Terry and I participated in because we were completely drenched from judging the sandsculpture contest. And I'm here to tell you that we did win. All three of us won the wet t-shirt contest. Thank you. It was terrific. Great job.
Thank you. Phil?
I'll take up a little more time. All of us have meetings galore coming up in the very near future on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Town Manager Search, UDO Breakout, REC Center, RFQ. So, we're going to be very busy. But that'll be an exciting busy. On a fun note, it was an honor for the mayor and the council to be asked to ride on the float in the Southport Parade. And what was so encouraging about that is constantly, as we were rolling down the street, people would yell, "Oak Island, that's my town. Yay, Oak Island. That's where I'm from." It was so encouraging to see that people loved this town as much as we did. That was exciting. I did go to David Kelly, the previous town manager's farewell dinner, and saw him receive the Order of Longleaf Pine, presented by Charlie Miller. So, I thought that was a very nice gesture of the people of North Carolina to award that to David. Speaking of David and speaking of Mrs. Adams, whenever I would contact David, the few times I would ask for something, he would always respond to me right away. And thank you very much, Mrs. Adams. When I reach out to you, the few times I do, that you get back to me real quick and tell me exactly where we stand. I appreciate that very much from you. Lastly, and this should make you smile, the 52nd Street Band has come out with a new single that has been played all over the radio stations called "OK Ian." And they are going to release that at the Second Wind Saturday night. And it is a song about the band from Oak Island. I think that is so cool. That's what I have.
Thank you. Here.
Thank you. I'll echo what my colleagues have said about the Beach Day. A special shout-out to the volunteers, the staff and the volunteers, who helped. I was going to put a little different spin on the sandcastle thing. I was going to say everything was great, except for this little sprinkle of rain that we had about 1:00. It literally poured buckets. The other thing I want to say is that I'll go on record as saying, and I dare anyone to disagree with me, Oak Island had the best float in the Southport Parade. Out of 153 entries, I'm convinced we had the best float. So, thanks to our staff for that.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't join the chorus of praise for the organizing committee, the staff, and really for our citizens for making the event so special. That being said, those of you who attended regularly know there's been, how do the Italians say it, "A pebble in my shoe called spectrum." And we lost our public access channel. And the months would grind on. I'm happy to say Sir Mike Emery, the man behind the curtain, was doggedly persistent, and our interim manager, Mrs. Adams, apparently can be quite firm. And they have poked successfully the dragon called "spectrum," and they have restored our service. So, thank both of you for that. It took eight months and a lot of effort. Thank you.
Channel 8 is back.
A very popular channel, I might add.
Thank you for your reports. Next is the consent agenda. And on this agenda, there are the REC Center study, changing it from RFP to RFQ, the approval of minutes for April, the approval of ADA accessible kayak launch for 2425 public beach and coastal waterfront access grant application, where they pay the majority of that ADA kayak input, which will be placed at the REC Center, and we'll take the one at the REC Center and find another home for it. And then the contract with Withers Ravenol to provide services to update our Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is a significant document. It maps out the scope of work. And there's a great deal of community participation, engagement in this noted in the contract. The Consolidated Land Use Plan, though an update to the current one, is really pivotal to Oak Island's future. So, it's a, really a mission mandate that we go through this process. And we will, there will be participants from the community. We'll look, please look for those opportunities. And with that, that's basically what's in our consent agenda. Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda as modified to include the RFQ for the REC Center.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can we have a discussion real quick? There's a question. There's a typo.
So, the consent agenda is not supposed to have discussion, but I can ask Mr. Kirkland just very quickly, was that supposed to be one month or two months?
We confirmed it was two months.
Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so one more time. A vote to accept the consent agenda. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. There are no committee appointments, which takes us to administrative reports.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Just a few things tonight. I'd like to get to a review of the end-of-year financials for you. But before I do that, just a reminder for council for their special meetings coming up July 23rd and 24th, the Table of Uses, Definitions, and Supplemental Regulations. Also, just a calendaring awareness. I am attending the North Carolina Local Government Budget Association meeting the end of this week. And we're still working on your adopted budget, which we hope to have published for you by the end of this week. So, I think while Mike is pulling up financial report, I'll try to do that from here. Not sure if I need to clear. So, just a quick overview. This is how we ended the fiscal year that ended June 30th. That was the '23-'24 fiscal year. Overview of the general fund and the revenues. Total revenues were at 92.3% of budget, but the ad valorem tax revenues were over 100% of what was budgeted. So, very excellent revenues on the general fund side. We had an additional $7.3 million in FEMA grant reimbursements that we had received. If you will recall, at the very beginning of last fiscal year, we paid off a $10 million loan in anticipation of getting that hurricane reimbursement. We are still waiting for another 2.5, which we have been assured has been approved, and it's just a matter of when we get the check in. But it should be very soon. We've also done extremely well this year in interest. I was able to maneuver some of our excess cash to a capital management trust fund, where we have been earning approximately 5% on average. So, we realized $1,002,000 more than we anticipated in interest. That'll drop straight to our bottom line. Fund balance, again, will continue to remain strong. The final totals of that will not be till after the audit is performed, and there'll be adjustments moving forward. But so far, it looks very strong. On the expense side for the general fund, no departments were over budget. Thank you all very much. Expenditures were approximately 92% of budget, which is fantastic. $1.39 million has been encumbered of that. But sometimes contracts or products that you order carry across the fiscal year lines. So, we have about $1.39 that will carry forward in the form of the POs for the next fiscal year. And all debt and lease payments were made as scheduled. And as I said, the $10 million loan was paid off. Excellent shape on the general fund. This is what I'm working on for you with our new financial software, starting with the end of July, so your first meeting in August. I will be able to provide you a SOAR-type report to show you comparisons of budget and actual and the difference. And I know you like the variance percentage column as well. So, this is just a sneak peek of what we're working on. But this is your totals broken down a little bit further for every different revenue type. And you can see each of the department's expenditure categories as well. And that's where we finished up at the end of June. On the enterprise funds, equally as positive. No expenditures, no fund at all went over budget. And 96% of water revenues were received, and over 100% of our sewer revenue was received as anticipated. Again, excellent on that. The Gulf Fund, they have been working tirelessly to increase their revenues, and in fact, it shows. They are up 127% over budgeted revenues, and that equates to almost $200,000 over prior year's revenue. So, great job in the Gulf Fund. Peer revenue was 96% of what was anticipated. And of course, the parking fund is doing just as well with 172% of budgeted revenue. I'll go into that a little bit further. All of our wastewater debt payments were made in full and on time. This is a little bit more of the parking revenue. We do watch this each month as it comes in. This is a comparison of where we are currently, because they do it on a calendar year basis. And of course, we have to split that because we're on the fiscal year. But I wanted you to see where we had been so far this year in March, April, May, and June comparatively. So, just look at June in the far-right column. You can see June was $248,000 compared to last year's June, $209,000. Doing well there as well. The three funds that are accommodation and beach nourishment funds, based on room occupancy tax. You can see the 45 Fund. We were over 100% of anticipated revenues there. Room occupancy tax in the 46 Fund was also over 100% of what was anticipated. The 47 Fund is always exactly at 100% because it's just transfers, straight transfers in. Sorry, that was the last slide. That is all I have for you on a quick overview of where we ended the year. As you know, the audit will immediately start. Soon as we get the contract, hopefully, signed tonight, we will begin our audit process. And then the third-party audit consultant will come in and give you a much more thorough evaluation of all of our numbers.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other reports, administrative reports?
That's all I have.
Brian?
Mr. Eads?
I hate to miss the wet t-shirt contest.
It was not pretty.
It was a three-way tie, right?
Yeah.
That's all I have, ma'am. Just a little here.
Thank you. New business. Selection of stakeholders and steering committee for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. So, this discussion is essentially about identifying the steering committee, which is a standing committee that goes through the process. And then there are also other roles identified in the Consolidated Land Use Plan that are more short-term, really just one, one hour, approximately one-hour meeting. So, council, we need to decide how we want to form the steering committee.
I thought it was proposed that two planning board members, two council members, one environmental committee member, one Parks and Rec Board member, and one business advisory member. That's what my understanding was that we were going to pursue.
I think we're simply verifying that that's the direction we were going to go. That was proposed in the contract.
Madam Mayor, if we could take a little bit broader view of this. So I think the consultant's recommendation, the template they've given us, if you will, is very sensible. And so as I look at the stakeholder engagement categories, the groups that they are proposing, that makes sense. It's logical. But I think what I would want us to consider is how transparent and open-ended can we make this? And I would hope that we would encourage an application process so that the entirety of council sees the available interest and the pertinent talents of each individual volunteering for a 12-month project. So for those of you not looking at this, the category are land planners, architects, it's a kind of professional category, citizen, board representatives, business groups, employers, economic development, chamber of commerce, and then lastly, citizen groups, environmental groups, community leaders. As focus entities, it makes sense to me, but I would want the application to be part of the process, and we are all as body looking at the applicants and making choices based on what they submit in terms of their VITA. Insofar as the steering committee concerned, again, they've given us a template. I would submit that there are a couple of things that aren't on here that I would want to add, or at least ask my colleagues to consider. So I think clearly the mayor would be ex officio, the manager would be ex officio to this group. And what it doesn't have that I would like to see, again, using an application process, would be to have two citizens who are also part of the steering committee. Again, looking at the template provided and thinking how we could implement this. If we're looking at organized committees which have already elected their leadership, it would make sense, they have chairs and vice chairs, to simply move those folks forward, assuming they were, again, willing to commit to a 12-month process. That makes sense, takes the politics out of it, and it's, to me, pretty straightforward. But again, I would want to add two citizens to the steering committee. I think they deserve to be at that level in a process this complex and this important. So those are my thoughts, Madam Mayor, and I've tried to broaden that lens out a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bach. I really appreciate your ideas and how clear and concise you made that. And you've covered the questions and concerns that I had, the recommendations that I had. So I'll just say that I support 100% what you presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Similar to what we did with the business advisory board.
Correct.
People turn in their applications, and then they're reviewed and voted off.
Correct.
Very good.
Anything else, Phil?
No. No, I'm in agreement. I think that's a, I like that process. It certainly makes sense to get distribution throughout the community, as well as our staff and elected officials. And working through an application process removes the opportunities for potential bias. So, great suggestion.
Right.
Yeah, of course. Councilmember Bach and I are in agreement to open this up, similar to what we did with the business advisory committee. We'll take applications, gives us an opportunity to view qualifications and skills and interests. Someone may be interested in a stakeholder engagement, which is a shorter-duration role versus someone who may be interested in the long-term steering committee. I think it's only fair to open it up and allow people to have that choice and fill out an application, I'm assuming online. I just would ask staff, staff, are we prepared, like the business advisory committee, to offer something available online for?
Yes, I have a steering committee application ready in anticipation if that's where council wanted to go. And I can just tweak that for the stakeholders groups as well.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask about the timing of that? So in your rules, we try to have 30 days for you to review applications. So for the August meeting, we had put the 17th as the deadline for applications. But for this, if we wanted to open that up till the 31st of July, and then staff could have them to counsel the first or second, if that would be enough time for you to consider them by the 13th, would that be enough time?
September 13th, you're talking about?
No, that would be August 13th.
Okay.
Does that also provide time to execute the contract with Withers? I mean, we just approved it tonight as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of signing. We can execute that tomorrow.
Okay.
So those dates again, Lisa, please.
If you open up the applications to be accepted until the 31st. And then staff could assemble them and have them ready for counsel the first or the second at the latest, depending on the number of applications.
I would argue, given the unfortunate delay we've had in launching this, that we need to move with alacrity here. And I think unless we're inundated with applications, which would be a pleasant problem to have, I think we can meet the August deadline and get moving on this. Bear in mind, again, I'm not sure what information you're looking at, 12 months is the estimate, and the fee is based on that. But then 90 days for KAMA to approve, so you're talking at least a year and a half here, the way KAMA moves. So the sooner we begin, the sooner we're going to get to the end product, which the gentleman mentioned earlier. And I just want to say thank you, sir. Having served on the 2017 land use, these reports tend not to get full implementation just because of the scope of it. And so the sooner we get it, the longer we have to contemplate implementation and cost effectiveness and so on and so forth. So all of that makes sense. I think the 13th is a viable date with 31st closure.
I just want to add for people to consider, excuse me, there are plenty of opportunities for public engagement throughout the entire process. There'll be multiple opportunities where you can come and express or react to the work that's been done today. So the consultants are really based upon skill sets or areas of experience. And please consider that when you're filling out your application and give us the information that we need to make the best selections. And then for council to look for the most qualified individuals. And that really is, they only meet one time, if I understand the contract correctly. So if you're someone who doesn't normally volunteer for a committee, this is a great opportunity to participate in an area of expertise because it's time-bound, it's very time-bound and doable if it fits your calendar.
Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate for us to ask the interim manager to help us with getting the word out about this so that something could appear like in the current places like that to make the public aware? Because if they're not watching tonight, they may not hear about it, so.
Well, there will be. Yes, and we can also advertise it in the newspaper as well, as we do with the regular committee applications.
Okay, thank you.
That would be great.
The devil's in the details. Stakeholder engagement, they've listed maybe 15 occupations or descriptions. Are we looking for four to six people?
Yes.
Is that what we're agreeing to?
Four to six in each category.
In each category?
Yes.
Meaning 24, or, okay.
Right.
But they'll meet separately as groups?
I think the theory, Councilman Kraft, is that with a smaller group, you can be, you're able to get to a greater level of depth of information and concern and hopefulness.
Four different groups of?
Yes.
Four to six people.
As the mayor pointed out, there are large public feedback sessions where the public can react to the preliminary product as it comes along. So that's very different than sitting down for an hour and a half with a consultant and in-depth interview.
And I would hope that council then, once we get that report, that we take the recommendations, identify the ones we believe are viable within the next one to three years, and prioritize them. That would be a great approach and keep suggestions or recommendations from languishing. So is there a motion to? We need a motion, Lisa.
We need a motion. The clerk has just handed it to me. Thank you, Lisa.
Read it.
Motion to direct staff to solicit applications for the steering committee and stakeholders group for the council meeting of August 13th, per the discussion with that. Thank you. That's the motion.
Excellent.
I'll second.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Making the comment that I feel like I heard something different in the motion than what I understood in the, in Mr. Bach's proposal. That was my hesitation on voting.
All cleared?
No.
My understanding is that we're to solicit applications for the steering committee and for the stakeholders groups for council's consideration of the August meeting.
The steering committee is also receiving applications. We would not accept Withers-Ravenell's recommendation for the board representation.
Yeah, thank you. My proposal reflected filling those positions based on elected peer leadership. So head of the planning board, vice chair of the planning board would be the recommendation, head of the environmental committee. My recommendation also included two citizens to be added to the steering committee. So that you have the detail in the minutes.
Yes, that's what, I'm sorry, that was my understanding as well, was that was for the two citizens.
Thank you, okay. I'm good then, thank you.
Here is ex officio, so on. I mean, you've got all the minutes.
Thank you for the clarification.
If you need confirmation, that was my understanding as well, so.
Thanks for bringing me along.
Next on the agenda is Town of Oak Island needs to engage an independent auditor. And Mrs. Adams, if you'll please take this.
Sure. So this is a standard engagement for an independent auditor to provide our required audit and provide financial statements and their preparation for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. What's presented here tonight is a standard audit engagement letter and the actual audit contract to engage with Preston Douglas and Associates for your consideration. Thank you.
Discussion?
So, manager, last week we talked about how long it's been since we have solicited. And I believe you indicated that next year, given a lesser time crunch, you will be prepared to solicit, or the new manager will be prepared to solicit, a new bid for the auditor. Is that correct?
We will, absolutely.
If I may ask, when it is possible for you to develop the list of RFPs for major operations, we've talked about that quite a bit, I'd like to see the dates and the targets.
I do have that. I'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I can't believe I'm writing 2025-26. Next is a cell tower lease.
Madam Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, I get ahead of myself. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the audit contract as presented.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, next is consideration of a cell tower lease for U.S. Cellular. Who's taking this one, Catherine?
Sam, this has been reviewed by our attorney, and he's here for any questions. This is consistent with our other cell tower leases.
If I could just add one thing, I'm sorry, I didn't get to tell Ms. Adams this earlier. I did speak or email with the representative from U.S. Cellular, and there is not an exhibit B or C. They don't have a memorandum of lease, since they were asking for just a renewal, but we're giving them a new contract. So there's not a memorandum of lease included.
So there is a renewal for a contract from previous, I'm stuck now looking for the year. But were any of the pricing, pricing changes?
As I read it, a 3% escalator, consistent with the previous lease that was approved three or four months ago.
Okay.
3% is the going, going rate on cell tower leases right now.
Lisa, where's the motion?
Just be motion approved as presented, minus exhibit B and C.
Have a question, thanks.
Brian or Catherine? I'm smiling, this is a financial windfall for the town. How many cell tower leases do we have? I didn't give anybody a forewarning, but just roughly, would you know?
Four or five, yeah.
Four or five. We'll get the exact number for you.
And they're all in the $36,000 per year range?
They vary.
I don't want to take a guess on that. We can research those.
I had no reason other than to smile. That's just money falling from the sky, as far as I'm concerned.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
Yes, there is a motion. Motion to approve the lease with exhibit A only, bearing in mind there's no B and C.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries. And I'm sad to say that this is the end of our agenda. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I think we need to fill the next four hours, Madam Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Jeopardy starts at 7:30.